This meeting is called. You're welcome here to this meeting of Mayor and Board of Lords in the evening. To everyone, this is the March of March, St. Patrick's Day, International Women's History. So we are celebrating those two things that I know of. Mr. Gordon, roll call to determine the court, please.
Ms. Brighter.
Here.
Ms. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Green.
President.
Mr. Locke, here. We are all present at this moment.
Thank you. At this time, we have the invitation by Mr. Shaw and pleased lead by Mr. Green.
We have a moment of silence but also request all of the things that's going on right now. Thank goodness you're not reaching.
And a moment of silence to include David Jackson, who was on trial.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, let's remember that family. And let's have. Lord, we come to you now thinking for love us and care for us and for watching out for us for different things. Some people murder, Lord, and we have these people coming through Jesus Christ our Lord. We would be having this movement good together, maybe. And if we can love one another like we should and we are doing it, and we thank you for the Christ and the Lord.
Salute, clear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the mission of the Constitution just for all.
I know you just know if you got to stop one thing and start another.
We can't hear.
Ma'am?
We can't hear.
Oh, my life is casting. Testing.
That's good.
It's almost too loud for me. Okay, we gotta do a sales tax. I've been running out of since four o'clock this morning trying to meet a deadline on a grant. We got it in, then to have additional information, so it's been an extremely long day for me. And I want to just get it to you, I'm very tired. But we have responsibility here, and we're gonna go on with this meeting. At what point, Ms. Gordon, you're gonna do?
Just all of the main agenda and it'll tell you what's the next. I'll help you with that.
Okay, 'cause I don't have time to look at this and try to meet that deadline. Okay, let's go to public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. It's item number two. No, item number three. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to say a few words.
Yes, sir.
I would just want to say that I am proud to be part of this group here and also in this area. And we've had lots of, a whole lot of folks that's gathered together to be what we want. And it's me that got it good, and nobody else. Undermanned, and that's my end, by default for that. But anyway, I appreciate everybody over my ten year period of working well, loving our folks. And, but we gotta do our part. And I just solicit that you would help us continue operating. And we just thank you for it. And thank you for the help of politicians for the kids, that was most important we set up. So thank y'all so much.
Thank you for those key remarks, Mr. Shaw. Okay. Comment, public comments as it relates to items on the agenda. Just state your name, address, please.
My name is Bishop Chuck. Testing.
Thank you.
My name's Bishop Charles Bradford. I reside at thirteen twenty South Washington Street in Mather. And I'd just like to make a couple of comments on a couple of items here on the agenda. I'll get to the Councilman, Mary Gwelle. As again, I noticed item number four, number seven, and number, what is it? Fifteen C and fifteen D. And on the special, the special call meeting, I guess you're gonna go and close that special meeting. Item number five. I'll start with number three. I think there's been a ongoing relationship about who, what attorney we gonna hire, when we gonna hire attorney. They stay here, just say, appoint an attorney. I think as a citizen, a taxpayer, we need to have a little more clarification from the council, whoever makes this appointment, about this attorney. Ask me why. I'll tell you why, because I feel that we already had two attorneys, three or four, two or three have resigned. We hadn't come to a clear, any clarity on that. And we don't know what the salary gonna be, do we have it in the budget? Have the council considered, what's in the budget for the new council? And another thing, as city council, what is his description? He's just gonna come once a week like they're doing now? Are we gonna have a full-time attorney? Are we gonna give what we paying for him, what's his salary? I asked the district council, I think my wife's supposed to be having that time, she's out of town to a funeral. I asked this council just to hear that, because what do we, we got upcoming elections coming, we got a new budget coming within three months, and we need to look at all the things before we go and put people's in position. So we can know that we got adequate enough funds to pay for it, and that we get as much as we can for our dollar. You know, we gotta move the city forward. I know based on the last recent audit, they speak of a whole lot of misappropriate funding, overruled other departments, and different things that that nature just taking place. We're paying employee head under suspension. There's a lot of things going on. I don't wanna go in detail, I don't think we probably go in detail. But that says it, some, that give me a great deal of concern as a citizen, as a taxpayer. Because when the audit say, we've been out of compliance, we haven't been just in the last decade, decades with a S. Like, you're gonna take a little way back. That, that, that's concerning to me, you know. I hope that we do not entertain the attorney issue today. Based on some of the financial distribution, and that's not personally against anybody, 'cause now the name won't be, just say attorney. We need to see can we get as much of our money, because dollars are tight in a economy like today. I'm gonna move on from this. Number seven, the sale tax. I'm getting confused on the sale tax of District number one, because I see two different resolution numbers. I see one saying Resolution twenty-three, twenty-thirty-three, twenty-three, twenty-thirty-one. Uh, thirty-two. Thirty, thirty-two, yeah, thirty-two. Are we referring to the same sale tax, or we, uh, uh? Well, these two, see, resolutions are very important, because we got to step in, what we approve and what we not approve.
They're separate. They are separate.
They are, that's two different ones?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, okay, they are separate. Hmm, there is a record in the minute. Okay, now I move on. Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Yeah.
Thank you. At least I have a better idea, they are separate, where they read one. But let's go on to, I think it would be D, under, 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 yes, fifteen D. Mrs. Hill, is Mrs. Hill here? She's not here. Okay, now talk about Martin Luther King Drive. As a counter date for city council, that's in my district. That's, that's the line of my district. And I think Mrs. Hill went to the police jury, they push it back on the city, the city push it back on the police jury. We need to get some clarity, because that, that, uh, if I'm the council or not, that's still my district. And I think we all should be treated, you know, equally to our district. From my understanding, from the last map that just the, the brought in, that's, that's the line, that's the boundary line. Otherwise, one side of the street, the east side of Martin Luther King belongs to the city of Mather. We can vote. The west side of Martin Luther King belongs to the parish. Let it look a mess overall. I mean, you know, the streets are torn up. I, as a district council, well, district council would consider getting with the police jury and make a decision and clean, you know, fix that street. That's a disreason for the street being named after Martin Luther King in that condition in any city. And I think it'd only be appropriate for us to get with the city. And if I'm elected, I'm gonna get with the police jury, or not, I'm gonna get with the police jury, I'm just gonna get with it. Okay, but that need to be taken care of, because she been going back and forth for months with that. What style, who gonna fix the street, who's responsible for the street. I think we, I think it's a, it's combined effort on behalf, we should look at our budget, see what we can do, and ask the city to play their part, and see what they, I mean, the parish play their part, and see what they can do and solve the issue. I don't know who drove it. We got Dejeroozen Church, we got our school board meeting there. A lot of traffic goes up and down Martin Luther King and commerce. And I really would ask the district council with respect there, and get with them with whatever we need to do to solve the problem. We can do better. You know, we come together, we work together as a community. And, and I just, I really, it's disturbing about this hearing, because like I said, we're three months out from setting our budget for the next year coming. We need to really look and see what's there. We're short a police officer? I mean, we can, we can put three officers that go here and nobody on the street where the crimes taking place. I'm concerned about that. If the money in the budget to hire three people to come into the city hall, we all be checking, check in, and nobody out on Racine or whatever name the street where the crime happening, that, that's not appropriate. We're not spending our tax dollars according to what we should be doing. We should protect the citizens of this community. I mean, and then we have the front door not secured, and the martial regulation security system, and all the doors up here from the entrance all the way to the clerk office, even to your office there, is now under locking key. Why are we spending this money? They are, they are checking us. The audit had checked us. I don't know, what city council, have you all seen the audit or done? I, I don't know. If you haven't seen it, I have, I have a copy, it might be here. It's a disturbing, there's very disturbing things in there about department head overruled, no respect. And like, again, I'm gonna leave this, I'm gonna sit here, man, I'm gonna move on. I just, a letter in my mailbox, my personal mailbox, describing to me what's going on in the city hall with a sexual harassment case of a department head.
Excuse me.
With a department head.
Order.
I'm sorry.
Order.
Well, I just wanna make sure the council, the way that, if we paying the department head that under suspension, that, that.
I'll speak, I'll speak on it, Mr. Bradford.
Would you?
I'm not gonna speak on it, I'm just.
Okay, you make me, and I'm done.
I'm pretty sure all of us have been aware of what's going on, we don't know the details.
Mm-hmm.
Like, they, we, we heard, we've been aware of what's going on. Oh, we heard, we don't.
Okay, you're all clear, okay. Well, okay, they came in my mail, and I just wanted, as citizens, I feel right to bring it before the council, because it is our tax dollar.
Personnel, personnel issues are not for public consumption.
It's for public concern.
Would you go to your next?
Public concern.
Your next point, would you go to your next point, please?
Okay, yeah, I'm done, thank you. And Mrs. Shaw, I'm gonna begin here. I'm headed to the revival, this is the, that day of thirty-one day. Y'all, thirteen, thirteen oh seven East Street, if I like to come back, please, John, we'll be there for thirty-one day. Thank you again, Mayor, and all of us. Thank you, I got it, thank you, sir.
Clarify, please, purposes, and if the citizen wants to, has the freedom of speech, except when it crosses the line. The audit that was just done, some previous administration, with the exception of a couple of things, but that is not the audit for this administration. So I will clarify that. Everything that we read isn't always accurate. And I spoke with the council members one-on-one, and so you have been apprised of audit findings and audit weaknesses as it relates to my direct conversation with the legislative auditors. Bishop Bradford brought up, and I had this in my notes to talk about a little bit, on security. Yes, we implemented security, and we have part-time people. It's hard to have somebody stand guard all day, every day. But you would be surprised at the number of guns that have been turned around at those doors and knives. And we need to protect not only the employees, or when we are assembled here, we need to protect you when you come here. You deserve to be safe. And I have to admit, I feel a little safer knowing we have security. And, and we have already placed the order for the doors to meet a certain standard that has to be met. Things don't happen overnight. But I think the employees feel safer, and I trust that you feel safer, because we've turned around a lot of guns at the door and knives. And you just never know.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Green.
Based on that, uh, the security that's outside, I just wanna know, why, why we don't use our own police department?
Well, very good question, Mr. Green. Being short as we are and prioritizing if there's an accident or break-in, something is occurring in somebody's house, or a fight, or something, we need to have those offices positioned to be able to kick in the gear. Thank you, Mr. Green. Uh, Chamber banquet, March the twenty-third, six P.M. at the municipal center. You have it on yours, okay. I believe Mr. Lee has made contact with the confirmed council members. I have a proclamation from the governor's office, people can have problem gambling. So March twenty, twenty-three has been designated as Problem Gambling Month. So I have a proclamation issued by the governor that we are displayed in this building. Okay, I have some really good news. And I am so proud to make this announcement. In fact, I think I'm gonna. I'm gonna announce this.
Did we, we missed?
Oh, I skipped the attorney. My voice, my voice. Okay, I'll be back up. Told you it'd be a long day starting at four o'clock this morning. Okay, uh, we do have on the agenda to appoint a city attorney. There's a vacancy that occurred when Ricky Smith resigned. And that vacancy has not been filled. And I temporarily assigned some duties to our city prosecutor in the absence of appointing one. So my appointment is Devin Jones to fill that vacancy thereby. That will eliminate the need for an interim. By virtue of that appointment.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For number four, appoints the attorney, because the last meeting you stated that, and you made him interim attorney. So you made him interim attorney without the consent of the council. What's the point of, what's the purpose of the attorney?
Okay, well, I'm making it as a regular appointment. Uh, Mr. Pierre assumed duties, and I didn't bring that before the council, for the appointment. He was confirmed as the city prosecutor in July twenty twenty-one. So he'd been in the middle of the firefighter's lawsuit, had some things to settle. So I didn't bring an appointment to you with anticipation, clearing that up. And it's not easy to find an attorney, it's just drop a bag. So I brought one in November, or the same one in December. Uh, appointment of temporary interim, which is to fill that void so that the city will be legally.
Mayor, I mean, we also, the council, this body also agreed that we send off for AG opinion to see can you allow an interim attorney, because the charter states otherwise. So to, for clarity, you know, we still on, we still waiting on the AG opinion before moving forward. So, you know, if you, if you wise to, being that you made him interim without the council conceding, 'cause you said you had the right to do so, right? So right now, 'cause you had the right to do so, a clarification is for the records, that the council will table till we hear back from the AG, the AG opinion, seeing that you have the right to appoint, to appoint an interim attorney without the consent of the council.
So, let me ask you a question, Mr. Green. In a vicarious way, are you saying that Mr. Pierre is an appointment, because the council cannot make an appointment, only the mayor can make an appointment?
I'm not, I'm not getting there. The only thing, the only thing that I'm touching base on is for clarification. We just wanna be, we just wanna be clear, that you have the right to appoint, I mean, your interim attorney without the consent of the council. That's it, that's what we, that's what we spoke about. We was hoping to have the opinion back before this meeting, but we haven't got it yet. So once we receive that opinion, we can move forward. You know, 'cause we, you know, as, as this body, we, we haven't gave a consent.
Okay, by that, when you speak, by that.
The council.
You have to speak as an individual.
Okay, as, as.
Each person's one vote.
You're right. I apologize for asking from District D, from our seat.
Yes, sir. Yes, to be.
We haven't gave a consent for, I haven't gave a consent for an interim attorney. And there's, and I read the charter front backwards sideways as well. I didn't, I was trying to, you know, justify, hopefully justify what you, your actions, but I haven't yet to see this. So that's why we waiting on the AG opinions. Again, also too, even to speak back to, not to go back to what Mr. Bradford saying, but also, it's been brought to our attention that you also have other council. So from District D seat, just clarity, because, you know, there's no transparency. So we don't, we gotta hear from other people on who's being hired, who's being paid by the city, for example, like legal counsel. And from my understanding, for legal purposes, it has to be in consent of the council.
Well, let's, let's talk about that a little bit. Thank you for raising those points. Bill Bowles is an attorney. Bond attorney. There's so many attorneys that specialize. Do you recall the load on Bill Bowles?
I don't.
And then we have, um, work that has necessitated professionals in certain areas.
Like what?
Okay, let me ask you specifically.
Because I, I'm not, you know, I try to be, Mr. Shaw's rodeo, so I'm just trying to get clarity.
Okay, okay. Now, by appointing, by confirmation, that negates everything.
Confirmation from the council.
From the council, exactly. That's why I continue to bring that appointment to you, so that you will have the opportunity to confirm. The city needs legal representation. The audit, and I spoke into the auditors, there, there's a deficiency that, that needs to cover the city. So on any given day in the day-to-day operation, the burden falls on the mayor to not let the city collapse. Uh, we, we may have, uh, somebody out, let's say, Ms. Gordon, she is city clerk. But the city has to function, that's a vital part.
I agree.
Yes, sir. So I keep bringing the appointment to you for confirmation.
I get it, um, back when we, back when the civil service was, right?
Sir?
Back when we had the civil service and nothing, right?
Okay.
Who was acting as city attorney for the city of Bexhill?
We had, well, that's a whole different story.
Okay, just, just name, just, I know I said Ekman as city attorney for the city of Bexhill, not as a.
We had the city prosecutor I assigned, which is within curbs of the mayor.
Who did what?
Day-to-day operation.
It was Rodney, right?
In part.
Okay.
Until, until he was called as a witness, and we had to secure other legal counsel for representation.
Okay, the firefighter lawsuit, who was Ekman as city attorney?
That, that fell in Mr. Pierre's lap. You had two attorneys, the cities had two attorneys for thirty years.
I'm not digressing.
Sir?
I'm not digressing, I, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, the further my point, meaning that, Rodney was, Rodney Pierre was acting as city attorney. He was having to do this other city attorney, correct?
Okay, I, I agree with your point.
Okay, so at some point, you decided to not have him act as city attorney, oh, I'm looking.
Okay.
Not him to act as city attorney until, to make a interim city attorney on your behalf without the consent of the council.
I made.
So our question was, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
District D question would be, why?
The needs of the city offer.
You can't tell me the needs of the city, 'cause he been acting as city attorney. That's why I asked you the question.
And all due respect, you're not on the day-to-day operation? I might, I accept it.
Okay, so, it's my guy's rodeo. So we, can we table this to the next meeting? I make the motion to table this to the next city council meeting.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm on that, my, I'm just gonna keep it electrified, I think that way. But anyway, uh, don't we have one already overflowed? I'm, I'm talking about the, the overflow.
So the AG opinion?
Yeah.
That's what we waiting on, that's what we said.
Well, I understand, but people get nervous when you get, get that tight on itself. But I'm, I'm not disagreeing with.
You know, I understand it, you would, you know, it happens, but, you know, it was just for us, like, the AG opinion was for clarity.
Clarity.
There's nothing more than the, this, America, so it's clarity.
Yes, sir.
Since we can't, since we can't give our advice or our consent, we could at least give us clarity.
Okay, and, and I did send, um, a letter to the Attorney General, and I, I have received a call. I did one by virtue of the mayor, the plan. The word interim is a key word in there. What I did was interim, because there were some legal needs that needed to be met, and because the burden falls on the mayor.
I get it, Mayor, that's why, that's why it's so, it's so cloudy, because you're saying the burden falls on the mayor, meaning that you put burdens, or you put the old same situation once before on Rodney Pierre. The same matters, it, it just, it's just different times ensuing, because we just had, we had this missing civil service matter.
Right.
We had fire situation.
Yeah.
And other situations, so that's, we just asking for clarity, like, we can't, apparently, we don't have no consent to say you can do the interim. So, and otherwise, from District D, I just don't care. Like you said, I can't speak for no one else, I can speak for my seat, because when you say appointments, you don't have no say so.
If I can, if I can be heard, Mayor. No, sir.
It's, it's, you can.
When, uh, no, sir, so that we can be clear, that's not what the resolution that you're offering. Are you going to ignore this? You have received a letter by Mr. Green, if you want to yield your time to Mr. Pierre, any other comments, we'll do it in that order. Mr. Pierre has been newly notified that he is the city prosecutor. That has not changed, that never changed. Like, if you want to share your time on this subject, to wait just. Like, if you want to use your time on this subject, to wait just a minute. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, I use my time.
Okay. So that we can be clear, uh, ladies and gentlemen, when the, when the appointment for city attorney was done at the first meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons, if you all can recall, because the, the agenda reflects it, there's never an appointment for a city prosecutor, so that we can be clear. There's no such thing in the charter with respect to appointment of a city prosecutor. What your charter says, and what the Larson Act says, and what, uh, uh, every other, uh, case law says, is that city attorney. When you look at your agenda, what your agenda says, appointment of city attorneys. With that, prior to that appointment, there was the authority to allow this board, to allow the mayor to engage the services for Ricky Smith's law firm. That was the first thing that you all voted on. The second thing came up was the appointment of city attorneys. However, when the resolution was passed up to you all, the resolution said one thing, the agenda says something else. The mayor, uh, has the authority to assign duties and responsibilities, clearly, only the mayor can assign duties and responsibilities. The mayor, and when the council voted to appoint city attorneys, you all voted to appoint me as a city attorney, as well as Mr. Ricky Smith. The mayor's resolutions assigned duties at that moment, it said city prosecutor, but that's, that's just an assignment of duty, the title is city attorney. And that's, that nowhere else that you're gonna see anything's gonna say city prosecutor, anywhere in any code, in any charter. So specifically, what is transparent is that the mayor assigned duties. Now, when, uh, the mayor assigned the duties on that particular date, the mayor was absolutely clear, that notwithstanding the fact that she assigned me specific prosecutorial duties, she also assigned me civil duties, because, uh, uh, Lotho versus City of Bastrop never moved from my desk since I became city attorney under the Cotton administration. So she just assigned me additional duties as prosecution. The duties as ci- uh, city attorney was there before this administration, and it has been there since this administration. I've said it time and time again, when you all came before, uh, this meeting, when you all asked for the Attorney General's opinion, the specific AG opinion request was whether or not the mayor had the authority to appoint a city attorney without the advice and consent of the council. That was the specific, the specific motion and the specific, uh, resolution that was signed. Subsequent to that, there was two different ver- uh, versions of the resolution that was actually prepared by Madam City Clerk, which she signed because, uh, because it wasn't signed by the mayor, the clerk was supposed to certify, uh, the documents, she did not certify. She certified a different resolution that you all requested, and it had the word interim. Now, if it's the spirit of this body that you want that particular Attorney General's opinion, ask for it, and I'll, I'll ask me to do it, and I'll do it. Now, what is transparent since that I think the mayor says that she's already asked for that opinion, if I'm not mistaken, that whether or not she has the authority to make an interim appointment for city attorney. So, the point, the opinion that you all have asked for, this body has already asked for that opinion before. Many other bodies have asked for that opinion before, the Attorney General has answered that time and time and time again. It's not gonna take long for them to come back and say exactly what they've said to the City of Bastrop, when the late Marvin Moore asked specifically for that opinion, uh, from the Attorney General. So that specific question that you all asked, I think I told y'all before, y'all asked that before, but if you want it, I'll ask for it again. It's gonna come back, and I promise it's gonna reference that Marvin Moore has already asked for this opinion. But notwithstanding, the late Marvin Moore, I'm sorry, has already asked for this opinion, but notwithstanding that, that is still pending, I got a correspondent, I think Miss, uh, Goldman handed it to me today, uh, from the Attorney General's office, and they indicated they would sign a lawyer to draft the opinion. And that letter that the AG's office sent to me is dated February the twenty eighth, and the, uh, it already is assigned opinion number twenty-three zero zero three four. Uh, uh, so, that's where you are, it's assigned, it's assigned to a gentleman, an attorney by name Scott with. So, that opinion is pending, it is coming at some point in time, I pretty much think I know what it's gonna say, but it's not my job to do that, it's not my opinion. You all requested Attorney General's opinion, so that's where you all are.
With that being said, Pierre, I am fully aware of those opinions that are out there, one of the late council member. The word interim was not interim, you were, um, thinking it was a two to three vote, and that opinion also said that you were invalid. But you continue to operate as law, and I do recall that, because I have a.
Man, that opinion did not say that, but.
I was putting the, the word interim, Miss Goldman, listen at the tape. And for clarity, I know what the charter says, this is not my first time being mayor, I've read that charter back and forth. And you leave out an essential word, and you're gonna get an answer that wasn't reflective of what happened in this council meeting. But all you say, Mr. Green, I, I'm respecting what you had to say, Mr. Chantel, was there anything else? You, you made a motion, and you wanted to make a statement, Mr. Chantel.
But I, you know, I don't agree or stop the process, so I'm still, we, we get. Didn't work fast, no, no, should, if we got to.
I have received confirmation that, um, the letter that I sent has been assigned as well. I have also had a conversation with the Attorney General's office, and if Miss Goldman were out and someone had to fill you, you couldn't let the city collapse, if, if, same thing with any other, if somebody is out for your time, so that's what that's.
I get that, that's what, also too, we have somebody that's there already in place. You don't like, have someone, attorney already in place.
So.
You, you think they had a roster?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Law.
A letter, a letter. Any letter coming back to you from Attorney General?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
But I think that what Mr. Green is asking, that we, until we get those letters back.
Yeah, and I, and I, I respect Mr. Green's comments, I really do, I respect your comments. The thing that I am often clarity on is that on a day-to-day basis, with what I see in terms of the needs of the city, and the city being covered legally, that's where I am. And I bring this appointment as an appointment asking for your confirmation, and that's, that's it in a nutshell. So, how much you want the city exposed to liability, that's on, on each one of you.
If you, if you, if you allow the city to be exposed to liability, and have no resources to be somewhere, then that's on you.
No, it's not on me, because it's the archive and document, I'm sure.
That's why you're clouding, because if you can assign Mr. Pierre a civil situation, you said you can, he, he act on the duties that you assign. So if something come up, if you allow, if you allow yourself not to assign him to, to perform those duties, then that's on you.
I think there was, there's sufficient documentation to speak to, I have heard that, don't want this to cloud against the.
Yeah, I make the motion to table this, I mean.
Waiting on the, waiting on the answer, waiting on the opinion from the Attorney General, in writing.
I make the motion.
Okay, you are making a secondary motion to Mr. Green's motion, Miss Goldman?
I, I, I make the motion, so we table this, till we hear back from the AG, about his opinion.
That's, that is your motion, Mr. Green? Okay, and, in second. Any questions? Discussion, all right? Impose motion, can? Okay. We have, we have spoken about.
Oh, it hasn't been changed, Miss Gold, to the twenty-third?
It's still the twenty-third.
Okay.
It's six o'clock.
I'm sorry.
What, what's happened off of the day, closing around after?
No, ma'am, well, the other day, probably that's loading is the deadline for reserving, sixteen. Now, it's the twenty-third, two weeks from tonight.
Also, confirmation for Emily. Okay, we have, I mean, uh, some opportunities, the watershed initiative. Been on time listening to webinar, and, and they, it's important, we don't want this out there, I've already spoken to engineer about that.
Mayor, we can't hear.
We can't hear what?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but we can't hear y'all, and you're well.
Can you give me now?
That's bad, yes, ma'am.
Technology's not much wrong, sir. Okay, uh, Louisiana Delta anticipates unveiling on March the twenty-seventh. However, one of the air conditioning units is out, we were able to get repairs on one of them, and we've been getting quotes. And we had a quote that really was astronomical, so looking at some alternate means, trying to work towards accommodating that date, they're working nicely. I was out there the other day, so they have that, um, simulated nurses stationed up, and it looks really good. We had to do some minimum repairs, but they invested a lot into making that facility a simulated program. Okay, the emergency grant, thank God, got it all, there are a little more to do on it, we're trying to, I got the meat of it. We have a sewer break on four twenty-five going north, that we're going to have to fix, and, and the onus is on us, because the sewer line is ours, and it's gonna be very, very expensive. So, I'm looking at some funds, and hopefully we'll have an answer within a, a few days, whether we will be able to, uh, access what we're asking for. Miss Goldman, I need to get a letter, because they, just a few minutes, at six o'clock, they're gonna need to know if we can provide a match. But one of the things that I put in, in my narrative, was that we're a small municipality, as you know, don't have a huge revenue stream, and we want to maximize all the dollars that we can get, because when we spend money, then that decreases our revenue stream when we do have to apply for something with a match. Um, the range of quotes to fix this went from, uh, anywhere between thirty-two up to seventy thousand dollars, so that's why I spent so much time with trying to access that, to ease the burden on the city's budget. Okay, thank you, that takes care of those announcements, any others are gonna have to wait, because the meeting following this meeting, we want to convene in a squad room and celebrate, or maybe cry a little bit.
Quick announcement, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
April the eighth, uh, well, back in twenty twenty, I lost one of my best friend on motorcycle, so for the last two years, we've been having an Easter hunt. We tried to do Griffin Park last year with the rain, so we had to move to the May, so this year we're coming for our second annual Easter hunt, and we're doing it with a little twist. After the kids' Easter, we're gonna do an adult Easter hunt, and we have local entrepreneurs, local, um, businesses, that's gonna put vouchers in the eggs. April the eighth, one P M, please password.
Okay, would you get me a flyer, I'll make sure that we get listed on the website, and knee pads for adults like me to crawl around and hunt for a.
It's gonna be a lot of food and them eggs, you know you like to eat.
It's gonna be a shaking egg, can you fit one in there? Oh, my name down. I think I'm gonna step away, got a couple things I wanted to, that's important to you. Been long, waited for, and I will start with our fire rating. Chief? I remember that day you boxed up all, how many boxes was it? I remember sitting over in the clerk's office, and asking how many bucks? Took, uh. Tim, I've been on hands and feet, I've been on hands and feet, I was invited over to the central fire station to be interesting yesterday, and I think just sitting on this information, Tim asked me not to make an announcement, so I had to meet, with all some anxiety. But it is with honor that I present that Bastrop has maintained a number one fire rating.
I'm gonna get a picture of y'all, I want to put on the chapter's Facebook page.
So I couldn't do it without the day-to-day dedication of these men, there's, uh, a lot of stuff, and we, it would take me days to tell you what all goes into this, but Mayor Mayo can contest, it ain't just something he decides to do overnight, and we couldn't do it without the, the water companies, uh, help, and the communications that the Sheriff Department has with us, I just wanna thank them, I just drive the, the caboose, and, and they, they do a lot of stuff behind the scenes that they don't even realize what, you know, they're doing and actually doing.
This is great. Gotcha, the number one fire rating.
You do a tremendous job, and it's an honor that I represent this city, the Fire Department, and have been able to turn a number one fire rating and maintain it, and it's in effect until twenty twenty-six, right, Chief? And I'm gonna ask Doyle Nelson, if you'd just stand up, because you were a part of this, and you, you'll come. I want my red representative fire, so you can come join us for a picture, please.
I'm, I'm trying to clap for them, I'm trying.
We didn't do that to you. That rating didn't do that to your hand, no.
No, I was at, at the base, and the chart got me.
Don't let her get a claim.
I got a squeeze.
Doyle, can you see this, yeah, moving a little bit, okay?
How about now?
Now I can.
You're the fire, ain't you?
Got it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank y'all, Mayor and Council, but also, we can't do it without your support, so we really appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Okay, we have two brothers, and Chief Williams will make sure they're properly displayed, and also, we're gonna display more in the hallway of the city. And also, we're gonna display more in the hallway of the city hall. Now, we have an election coming up on twenty-fifth. And I want to thank. Mr. Ray. You feel the end?
We can't hear now.
Oh. I thought my voice carried a little better than that. We want to thank you. The City of Bastrop extends appreciation to Emma Prater for serving as District B Councilmember August twenty-two to March twenty, twenty-three, along with Angela Moore, District A, Robert Shaw, District C, Derek Green, District D, and Howard Locke, District E. Your service has caused the sealed bathroom the biggest thank you for your service.
Okay, in addition to Shaw, since this is his last rodeo, it sounds gonna be my last rodeo. And I'd like to thank the mayor and my fellow councilmen putting up me on there for just for short term. I'm gonna miss listening to Shaw and DeeDee. We had a good time busting back, not really busting, but love talks back and forth. I guess I'm not all your peer. But I also want to thank the, uh, citizens of District B for allowing me to be short-term and serving you. I understand this election, we have four opponents. I don't know if I'm allowed to say that, but no. I think Shaw, your vision is there.
It's just taking them where you are.
Yeah, so.
They are three.
Yeah, they're three.
So, running sales.
Well, you will never serve you until that election is done.
I would just say good luck to you, um, on three, and serve for District B, and thanks to everyone.
Ms. Prater?
Yes.
I just thank you for serving, taking the courage to serve. Ms. Prater will be ahead.
Yeah, not as loud a talk as my husband was, but he was so tolerant. He loves to be. But I just thank everyone.
We'll be able to stay for a few minutes at the end of this meeting, looking squad.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more. Why you need to come down? Yes, sir. Looking like having good help. Got to wait for that game of weightlifting. Ms. Prater was making snow. Just stand right here. Okay. This is a flag for the city's seal on, presented to Robert Shaw with grateful appreciation for your dedication and service to the citizens of Bastrop, Bastrop City Council, District C, July thirteenth to March twenty, twenty-three, presented to you this night, day of March twenty, twenty-three. Thank you for your service.
It's, uh, it's a pleasure to be around the folks that we have, and, uh, what we've done for ten years. We got in, and, um, you know, we leaving it in good hands. Well, between two people, well, anyway, so, you know, it's, uh... I appreciate everybody's, uh, being available to us. Plus, we encourage all these different people, best of the people in services. And for that, we are so, I can't, and, uh, look forward to, uh, staying as far from this as I can, so, you know, whatever. I just thought I was here. But no, it's, uh, it's a pleasure, and, uh, thank y'all for it. And, um, I always stand, stand here, may have to do a special practice. Thank y'all very much.
I'll miss you, Mr. Shaw.
Well, I definitely gonna miss you. But, uh, this is fun, most of that's fun. But DeeDee, you gotta calm him down. He has come a long way, and I have too. But anyway, we had a good time getting there, so I'll put that way. So, thank y'all much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna try to get through this as quickly as possible. Okay, uh, we need to approve the previous minutes before we recess for the, uh, sales tax. I'll entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes, regular meeting, February nine, twenty-twenty-three.
Summled.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, at this time, I'm going to recess this meeting.
Mayor, can we have a motion?
Let me, please. I'll entertain a motion to recess our regular meeting to go into the meeting on our sales tax.
I made the motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Green?
Senator.
And second, multiple times. Any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, I'm calling to order this meeting for sales tax district number one on this Thursday, March ninth, in the courtroom. Roll call, Miss Ford.
Ms. Prater?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
President.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
Mayor, all present at this moment.
Okay, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Okay, we have item number four, approved previous minutes, July fourteenth. I'm looking for you. Wait a minute, I'm looking at that day, Miss Ford.
I need this resident to read it.
Okay, we need to. We're gonna, we're gonna correct that.
Yes, we should.
Do you know, that's a typo.
Right.
Okay. I will go to, oh, you made a motion. Mr. Shaw, okay, say second.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and second. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number five, resolution twenty-three, twenty thirty-two, V S T one thirty-one, a resolution providing for canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special election held in the sales tax district number one of the City of Bastrop, State of Louisiana, on Saturday, December the tenth, twenty twenty-two, and to formulate the results there. I spoke with attorney Bill Bowles. He was unable to be here due to personal reasons, but this is just really, um, confirming the results of the election. You all remember, we had those tags on the ballot. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion on this resolution twenty-three dash twenty thirty-two.
May I make a motion to approve the resolution twenty-three dash twenty thirty-two?
Yes, sir. Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this, uh, sales tax district number one meeting.
Summled.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The sales tax meeting is adjourned. We're gonna go back to our regular meeting, which is what number, yeah?
We're gonna do the roll call.
Okay, you're sitting right in the way. Resume regular meeting. Now, I'll entertain a, let's do a roll call.
Ms. Prater?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
President.
Ms. Locke?
Here.
Mayor, all present at this moment.
Thank you. Item number ten, consideration of and action on reports on committees appointed on the governing body. Okay, we have any reports, uh, of this panel? Anybody wants to speak to?
I know the, the, uh, roadwork's been slow.
Yes, sir.
And the sewer, and then it's bad, and so, but I see it turning around, so we are a little new. In the next few weeks, it's gonna be like, you know, it's concerning people, especially in our district.
Okay, thank you. Any other? At this time, Mr. Reverend DeVall, you're here. Uh, Terry People, Reverend DeVall, if you will come and just do an update. We've been doing, uh, some work in some areas that badly need improvement. And as I posted, to express appreciation, because our crews are short. They work hard in intense weather, and they've been doing a great job. So, Mr. Reverend DeVall, if you'll give us an update.
Mayor and councilmen, y'all doing well? Uh, we got a lot of stuff going on right now in the city of Bastrop that I know me and Mr. Peoples are proud of what we've been going through and what we've been dealing with. And as the mayor said, we had, she posted something on Facebook that made a whole lot of peoples as well as us look good. And Mr. Peoples can, can, uh, talk a little bit more on what we doing ditches-wise and street-wise, but for us department-wise, I like to say that we have done a tremendous job. We got with Mr. Coppton, and he working with us, uh, hand in hand, and, uh, it's a lot of things that we got going on. Uh, right now, what we got, that we finna do now, Mayor and councilmen, we finna start painting the swings and stuff that we have because we getting a lot of activities going on now since it began to get spring and summertime. And what we gonna do is get some new changes and stuff and put the swings back up. We want the kids to be able to do something when they come to the park, you know, until we get our equipment that we have, we've been already approved of up right now. They, they out there right now, but they don't have much to do right now. And we got the ball field looking together, along with, uh, Mr. Coppton, community. Uh, they getting ready to do some painting and stuff. So, we got a whole lot of stuff going on right now, our cemeteries. We starting now to get them going, uh, before we used to come in to get all this and taken care of. Like I say, it's just a whole, a whole community and, and city workers are working together to try to move this and progress the way we need it. And our streets, as she said, Mr. Peoples, uh, he can, he can talk a minute or two, and I'm coming back.
Okay, y'all look out for Mayor.
Okay, you gonna get the microphone.
Can you talk a little?
I can talk loud, but.
Okay, can everybody hear?
Y'all can.
We can hear.
Okay, she says she can't hear. I talk loud anyway.
How everybody doing tonight?
Not gonna sing, are you, dear?
No, man.
Like the blues.
I'll give that to my daughter. Anyway, this what we have going on. You know, we have been having a lot of floods and everything around here, and we was wondering why, especially the neighborhoods that it was flooding. Basically, we have right-of-way, we have called a right-of-way, and they, most of them have ditches like from Camille Street to Reece Street. We got in there, and we cleaned all those trees and debris and stuff that was growing in there. That was making the water derail into a different way, you know? When that debris found, and that water gets stuck in those curbs and those big pipes and everything, the water gotta go somewhere, so it's coming over the streets. So, we got in there with the guys, with, uh, Jesse DeVall, his crew, we got in there, and we cleaned all that out. And Mr. Damon had been asking us to do it for everyone. We just didn't have the right proper to do it, but now that we do, the saws and everything, I mean, like I said, we cleaned all the debris out from one area to another. And right there on George Street, you have, it would be out of the cemetery. We cleared that out. Across the street where people having floods and all, cleared that out for it to look better and everything. And another thing that we have going on, we got going on with these potholes and stuff. We have so much money that we can spend on coal mix and stuff, but we found the special coal mix that we've been getting, cost is a little bit more expensive. Expensive, but what it does, it's like it got the, uh, tack, and once you put it in the hole, it expands, and it stays in there and lasts long. So, we've been getting that, and I thank Ms. Sarah because she told me what I needed, how much I could spend on it and stuff, so I've been budget, kind of budgeting that. So, then we finally got hold to some, uh, pit run. We've been needing pit runs. We put those, the S B two rock down when we, we do a cover, when the rain come, it was washing away. We have to go back and put some over, but pit run, pit run, it makes it hard. It's not going nowhere. Then you put the rock over there, and it'll stay. And basically, we just been working together. Right now, we getting ready to start bush-hopping and, uh, more than, uh, more downtown and more than the communities. We, we, we doing neighborhoods now. We, we doing reading and everything in the neighborhoods. That's something new we doing because the ditches be grown up. And once the bush-hopping, we gotta cut around the mailbox and everything. So, we, we doing the best we can with what we got, you know?
How we coming along with doing those lights, getting the lights back up?
Uh, talking about the, uh...
Security lights, getting the lights.
Are you talking about Entergy?
Yeah, what she likes.
Uh, let me address that, Mr. People. I spoke with, um, the Entergy representative, and we basically at their mercy now. Mr. Locke, they started out, they put up seventy-five out of two hundred fifty. So, we just have to basically get in line because they have assignments with their crew, like we have assignments with our crews. So, I can, I can always continue to ask them because we still have some outage. Uh, did they come and do something? Uh, I know I met with Keep Wild's beautiful group, and they had inquired about the lights.
What we did, Mayor, we went around and we got the numbers off the light poles, and we turned them in. That's what we did, so we just wait.
Yeah, okay. And it was like two hundred fifty, and they, they did seventy-five, so we hit a stalemate. So, it's just time for us to give another call and see if they can, uh, pick up their strides a little bit. Reverend DeVall, he said, and I think this is gonna cover us on item number eleven with, um, forwards and, uh, comments that we had from the podium up here. Go ahead, Reverend.
I just like to thank the community that's out walking when they see stuff that we don't see. They report to us, and that they go back and check. We jump on to the people that we had busted sidewalks that we done took care of, uh, sinkholes that was really getting out of hand. But, uh, we need the eyes. We need, we need other peoples. We can't see everything. But when you find it, you let us know, and we jump right on it. With Mr. Peoples and I, we're, we're a team, and we've been doing the best we can do. And, uh, I'm, I'm proud. We got more peoples involved. And if we come together, we can do a lot more things, and we can come together and make that for better. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one.
Uh, the time to have, uh, done that, and on the, this is our item to vote on, Mr. Anthony. Okay. Okay, let's go to item eleven. A, committee report, resolution twenty-three dash twenty thirty bills and claims for the month of February twenty twenty-three. Uh, entertain a motion on the bills and claims.
Mayor, I've made the motion that we adopt this resolution.
Properly moved by Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
And second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Item number twelve, action on ordinance and resolutions introduced at previous meetings. Ordinance twenty, twenty-three dash four sixty-two, and ordinance to amend section five dash twelve of the Code of Ordinances to prohibit the keeping of horses, mules, swine, cows, goats, and like animals within the city limits of Basterd. Ms. Rogers, planning and zoning commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my name's Debbie Rogers, I reside at five five zero nine Modern Ferry Road. Um, currently the president of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, this was introduced at the previous meeting of the city council, it's up for vote tonight. And the, uh, planning and zoning recommends that, uh, this motion, uh, this resolution be approved. Uh, we feel that the city limits is not suited for animals and livestock of those kinds. Um, it will not prevent the people who currently have them from having to move them, they can keep what they've got, um, and they'll be grandfathered in, it's just for any future, uh, animals that people may wanna bring into the city. Uh, it's just, it would just be a detriment to, a certain part to the city. Um, so that's a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mayor, uh.
Yes, ma'am.
You're in the last meeting, one of the concerns that Mr. Locke had, he wanted to be sure, the claim stated in the ordinance that they would be grandfathered in, but then code enforcement was had a concern that the reg, uh, how they would enforce it. So, they added it to where if they got a call and they reached the complaint, then they would have to show proof that they own that animal before this is come into play and acted on. So, that way the document states that they have to show ownership available sale or something like that. But then also, it also is added on there, that once, if like they got three horses and one dies, you don't get to go get another one, you just down to two. And code enforcement would have some concern about that. So, we're, we're not really ready to vote on it, because if y'all look over, y'all okay with it, we need to advertise it in the paper for thirty days, the full ordinance the way it is now, and y'all have a copy of that.
Will you be able to have public comments, if y'all gonna be there where you have public comments on this?
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Locke, I didn't hear everything you said, I apologize.
If y'all gonna be there where you gonna have public comments? Or would you just want to post it in the paper?
Well, we have to write it in the paper, but the meeting, but next month, before the meeting, it'll be a pro, uh, it'll be a hearing on that ordinance, where the public can make their comments or whatever, and y'all be able to hear those.
So, it just take years?
Yes, sir. We want you to be sure you had the final draft, and that, and address the just concerns.
Do we need to go ahead and, uh, knock that?
No, sir, we need to wait.
Okay.
So, there any other concerns you have, before we put this in the mail-in promoting again, so that we can make sure that the language is crafted, is reflective of what you design to happen? Because that was one of my questions, if somebody's horse died, we're not gonna get another horse. And swear that was the same horse.
You plan out your route.
Yes. Okay, so we will, uh, at this hall, if you have any concerns, and when is your next meeting, Ms. Rogers?
Uh, our next, our next, uh, planning and zoning is, uh, Monday, the twentieth, March the twentieth. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, March the twentieth.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilmen.
Thank you. Thank you for serving on the board.
Thank you, Mayor.
That brings us to item number thirteen, other unfinished business, Miss Gold, you have anything else?
No.
Item fourteen, introduction of and permitted action on proposed ordinance and resolutions. Uh, anything with that? Item fifteen, other new business, discussion, action, request to purchase property at nineteen oh five Tucson. Miss Gold?
Mayor, this, and I gave you a copy of the deed. Uh, there was a property that was actually donated to the City of Basterd, and it's located on Tucson. A gentleman called me, he does own some property adjacent to this, and he is interested in purchasing. Now, um, because it does belong to City of Basterd, we need to bid it out, but he is okay with that, he just wanted to ask, would y'all be willing to sell it to him? The best I can do, it just seems like a small lot, there's nothing on it.
Cause anyway, you like open the lot, quick it's pop.
There's nothing on it. Oh, he answered, you know where it is?
Yeah. It's quick it's pop.
Oh, he said it was on, I think.
If, if you got somebody that wanna buy?
He does.
Yeah, it's, it's his answer.
I make the motion. Okay, all right, I'm back in my seat, okay, we have, you got your questions answered? Are you ready to make a motion? Okay, he's a cheerful guy. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the record. I'll entertain a motion on item A.
Properly moved?
And second. Any question, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Uh, B, resolution twenty-three dash twenty, thirty-one, resolution authorized in preparation in supplemental of an application to the Louisiana Department of Health, Office of Public Health. We have some gentlemen here who are going to do a presentation that's really very interesting, has to do with the drinking clean water drinking act that's, that's, um, has been in the media, and some money has been allocated to Louisiana. I've met with them, uh, we've met earlier, along with Mr. Nelson, the president of the police jury, Mr. Terry Matthews. So, I think you will find that this is a very interesting conversation. Say your name, your full name, yes, your company that you represent.
Good evening, I'm Edwin Jones, the, uh, CEO of EJES Incorporated, uh, has an office, an architecture engineering consultant firm here in the, uh, state of Louisiana. I'm very excited to, I think we have some good news on this program, uh, the EPA mandated the Clean Drinking Water Act, uh, for this upcoming year. That program is to replace lead cert, lead and copper, uh, lines that go from the main water line to the homes. So, this whole program is an initiative for an environmental help. Uh, the old lead and old copper lines, uh, eventually as they get old and start to deteriorate, gets into the drinking water, and that pro, that gets into our lungs, our liver, and all of the main, uh, organs that we have in our body. So, we have some exciting news, the EPA gave the state of Louisiana forty, forty-two million? About forty-two point three million dollars that they gave to the state of Louisiana to give out to our cities, to give out to our towns that's gonna help to replace the lead and the copper lines that exist in some of the communities. So, that's a very important program, is a very, very, uh, important health initiative that we're gonna focus on. They are very concerned and may wanna make sure that our elementary schools, our daycare, our, where all of our young people that exist in our city are making sure that they are not consuming old lead and old copper lines, so that's an exciting program. But we brought this program to Basterd, we excited about this program, and we're gonna be working with Doyle and, and his team to make sure that our citizens here in Basterd get, uh, those lines replaced. Everyone may not have lead and copper, so, so we have to do what we call an inventory first. So, that's phase one, it will be a inventory program, where we just identify where the lines are. Now, this is a revolving loan, so the state will get this forty-two million dollars for the next three years, they no guarantee. So, all of that money will be able to go out to our cities like Basterd, but we have to apply for the grant. That, that, you know, we, they just don't send the money to Basterd, we're gonna have to put the grant paperwork in, and our company will be doing that and helping, hoping to help, uh, Basterd with that. And to apply for that grant, we're gonna do that at no cost to Basterd. So, we not asking the city for anything, we wanna make sure that they get this, uh, this grant approved. We, we are a very competent company doing this, we got about fifteen cities that we work with to do this program from Vicksburg, Mississippi, to cities, uh, throughout the state of Louisiana. So, we excited about this program, Mayor, it's all about health, it's all about, you know, the safety of our, for our drinking water.
Thank you for that, um.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If that grant is approved, would that be a matching fund, uh, a hundred percent grant?
Okay, so let me tell you, right now, this is what the state is saying, and, and let me clarify something, this is a mandate, so you're gonna be under mandate of the Clean Drinking Water, whether you get the grant or not, but right now, the state is saying that they will guarantee forty-nine percent no payback. But it's gonna be fifty-one percent of it that has the ability to have a zero interest, you know, low cost for the cost of doing the loan, but it could be over a forty-year period, the state is gonna, uh, kinda control that, uh, well, you know, that period of minimum time for the loan.
So, it's a loan?
Forty-nine percent of it is guaranteed to be forgiven. Right now, they saying they're still making a decision on how they gonna handle the fifty-one percent.
It could also be forgiven?
Yeah, it could also be forgiven, but they have not one hundred percent, uh, made a determination on that. We know the governor has wrote EPA in the White House, because the state of Louisiana is a, what they call a disadvantaged state, so they're trying to ask that that other fifty-one percent be totally forgiven also.
Do the water company needs to own by a private entity, uh, a city?
Oh, that, that's a great question. The way it works is, if a city has a privately owned company that supplies the water, the city got to apply for the grant, for the funds. They will be have some kind of corporate agreement with the private owned company to deal with, you know? But it's the responsibility, uh, for the city of Basterd to take care of its citizens, it's not the private owned company. So, they would get the money, the city, and they'll work with their, their, uh, you know, that corporate, uh, agreement with the private company to make sure that our citizens are taken care of.
So, basically, and then I, this, I've met with them on two occasions, with today being the second. Where we are basically is, we apply for the forty-nine percent. If, if the application in early, or drag our feet, and end up with a mandate. For a hundred percent? Of a hundred percent, and trying to find that in a budget, today, with the grant that I worked on. Uh, it ended up with, can the city at least do something, and I was trying to get it all free, but I said, we'll go take a look at our budget, because we know we have to do it, so that's where we are, that's the decision that you'll have to weigh out.
And, and Mayor, let me tell you the good thing about it. You first, by October the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, you have to turn your inventory in. This is not anything that's gonna hit you in a year or next year, that you got to come up with all of this fifty-one percent. Now, they have a real good push going up in DC now, to get states like Louisiana, to get this thing totally funded. But we can't, that's not the mandate right now, the mandate is that the state will give forty-nine percent of the money, no payback. And the other fifty-one percent still has some, some, you know, agreement, and you got to remember, the cost of replacing lead service line comes, the big ticket is in the construction, when they have to go into the homes and do the actual replacement. So, we got some time in there to fight the debate for that fifty-one percent.
The, uh, fifty percent, People Water coming on for that fifty-one percent?
I'm sorry, Mr. Locke, I'm kidding.
People Water coming in on for that fifty-one percent?
Uh, well, we'll think about it.
I got a question, so.
Yes.
So, what happened, uh, once you do your report, and it's lead, copper, and water, do you, who get penalized, the city or, or the private owned?
No, it's, it's the, it's the city's responsibility.
Regardless?
Regardless, it's your responsibility, your citizens, but we don't, what, what you got to feel to realize is, once we find out it's lead and copper, that the EPA is not going to come to you and say you can penalize. You know, it's a whole working process, I can't tell you that number that length of time, but I'm almost sure we would not let it get to that, to that point where it's penalties and documents, because we gonna do all of the things that, that we do. The partner that we have with us that works this program, sat on the board, that created the mandate. So, we got a very strategic partner that understands that program and process, and we're pretty sure it won't get to no penalties, and it's not gonna get to no, uh, you know, daily penalties like the sewer contingency can be.
Yeah, the purpose of the inventory is to identify, so you won't be penalized at that point, that's not the purpose of it. It's just so, so you can get identified, and then you understand where you need to have that corrective action taken.
Yeah.
I guess the reason I asked was, the grant gonna come to cover the pipes that is underground, right, they have.
Yeah, the, 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 the lead and copper, yes.
Which, which, I hate to say this way, which is people are making money off of.
Now, we, we don't have no discussion, that's your, that's your, uh, partner there.
Do you want, there's a lot better things than not having that, but, hey?
I agree.
Yes.
Basically, we are, it's just, uh, it's, I'm feeling our obligation, can you hold me there, Mr. Doyle? Fulfilling our obligation.
Hold it.
Mrs. Green, either. That we all were of what's coming.
Right.
And our water company is privately owned, so what is the city's responsibility in this whole endeavor? I think that's the kind of clarity you're speaking, Mr. Locke.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Green.
Okay. I think, I think.
Go ahead.
Look, clarity on that point, once you do your, your, uh, inventory, that's your obligation at that point. That's where we are here now, do that first section of that inventory. But then, there's gonna be another part of the money also available for the replacement. So, so can People Water apply for this only grant?
No, no, that, that's, they, they can, they can apply for the grant, because they are private, making company, that money has to come to the citizens and to the city of Basterd. So, we'll get it, and it belongs to the city of Basterd, you will work with your corporate partner with those funds, because you know those are grant funds, so they, all they're gonna go, Basterd to do is to demonstrate that you use those funds to do that, so you just to work with peoples to make sure that the work is done.
So, Mayor, you said that they ask for, you try to get, you try to probably break the whole thing, right? But they ask for some sort of, that was on this particular grant, that is just for, they ask for something, but it's, it's clear on this one, that forty-two.
Forty-nine percent is, it, they, no payback. So, if you have a section, and forty-nine percent of it will be paid, uh, will be no payback.
Is there, if we need to make a motion tonight, or we just?
Um.
Um, I have a reservation, I have a copy.
It's a study, it's concrete, it's for study, for inventory, stop.
It's to do the application.
It's to do the application for the funds, and, and it's a first come, first served basis, so the state has already told us. They are determined to get forty-nine percent, to get that forty-two million dollars spent as soon as possible, so they have made it very clear to us. If Bastrop decide five months from now, they wanna put in for the free money, if the forty-nine percent is gone, you got to cover a hundred percent.
I apologize, Doe, what you saying?
I'm sorry, duh. We've known this for a little while, it's coming down the pipe, uh, EPA, you remember when Tennessee beat Alabama? Yes.
How long ago did it?
This last year, they moved the goalpost, that's what EPA does to us, they moved the goalpost. And so, we have to go look and, and determine each service, and it's not just people, it's not just Bastrop, it's every service in the nation.
Everyone.
Determine the materials.
So after we complete the forty-nine percent, we jump to something after that, right? Or what, what is the other part, how is it gonna be paid for?
Okay, this is fifty-one percent.
Yeah, I mean, if you get.
That is, that is something that you'll work out with, with, with your group. What I want us to know is that we need to get our application in, and we're planning on doing that. If, if it's our goal, we'll try to ask for Bastrop money within the next two weeks, but we got to get a resolution from Bastrop, so, cause that resolution has to be included in the application. And we'll work with people and make sure we get the right acts for our, uh, money for the city.
Now, I know that you did wanna get into the in-depth of the health issue that's associated with, with lead, and, and we all watched on TV where it unfolded in Flint, Michigan, and I have, have family in Flint, Michigan, and lost some of them to, uh, kidney failure, and there's a lawsuit now, and who are, that's class action suit?
Yes, ma'am, so let me tell you the ultimate goal that EPA is trying to evolve. Jackson, Mississippi, Flint, Michigan, they're gonna have class action lawsuits, eventually the citizen gets to come to Ja- uh, to Bastrop and say, you had lead and, and copper lines, you were aware of it, so now we have an Ali suffering, so we're gonna put a class action lawsuit against the city of Bastrop. They won't put it, they can shoot, it's the city that owe that to their citizens. So what we're trying to do is, the EPA is putting this program together to make sure that we, them, the federal government don't get any class action lawsuit, but they definitely don't want the city, uh, to be in that situation also.
Wait, listen, Nelson, we, we're tested, and we have been for years, for lead, we haven't had an issue with lead, okay? But the EPA has changed the rules, and they say you gotta know what the different service lines are, that's what the inventory is.
Yes.
The fellas here today are asking for this because there's an urgency in getting in line to get them.
Yes.
Uh, that's, that's where we're at now, is we gotta do that. We knew that we'd have to do an inventory, and we planned for it, we have to, we're gonna work with them. You got, uh, a number one fire rating, uh, Bastrop, people's got a A on the Louisiana Corporate Health grade, uh, so we got, we're gonna stay by the, we're gonna play by the rules, the EPA says, that's the way we do, that's the way we roll, so that's just, that's what's there.
We got another pocket of money that we can get too. If you look at that sheet, it's eleven million dollars in there to identify emerging contaminants that gets into our drinking water. That eleven million dollars is one hundred percent forgiven, you don't have to pay anything on the, uh, emerging contaminants. So we got two pots of money, we got the forty-two million, and we got the eleven million, and it's all first come, first served basis. So we'll work with the environmental, or whoever y'all have, to identify any contaminants that could get into our drinking water. So that's a win-win, because Mayor, think about it, that goes over into your treatment plant and everything, so the water comes through the plant to the citizen. So we got a win-win, but we got to, we got to move on the application in order to get you in line, so the state will commit the money to Bastrop. I will tell y'all, we know right now that Jefferson Parish, which has a hundred and sixty thousand lines, we know all these parish, we know East Baton Rouge Parish, and Lake Charles is ramping up, they gonna eat into that forty-two million dollars.
The, the application, there's no fee for the application?
Uh, no fee. And we're gonna prepare the application at no cost, matter of fact, we, we pretty much in pretty good shape to have it almost ready, we wanna submit it within the next two weeks, once we work with Doe on some numbers.
Your fee is there then too, though?
Our fee will come during the inventory, in which you get that fee out of the money that you get from the state. They gonna, that's why they giving you this money, to help you pay, to get that work done because of the mandate.
So let me finish, so the, the resolution in the state that we going to, you know, to contract with?
They, they provided us a, 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 a resolution that covered the application, and I, we need it word for word, what they said, we need it. Do you have a copy of that?
It's not around here, just the resolution?
It is.
But I, I just wanna say, now, we'll work with the city any way we can to bring them into the drinking water. We'll work, we'll work with the city, just like today, the mayor called at two o'clock afternoon, said I need something for a creed, and we had scrambled around to get it, but we got it.
You got it.
We'll work with the city. Whether you get that, the money or not, we'll, we'll provide the information that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, I do thank you for jumping into gear because we were at a critical juncture. Mr. Williams, did you wanna add something? Introduce yourself and tell a little bit about your background.
Thank you, Mayor, you know, I'm, I'm what you call a recovering, recovering politician. I served as a cattle parish commissioner for four years, and I'm, uh, state representative, uh, for twelve years, and so I'm totally familiar with how all these things operate. I've been working with Mr. Jones here, we went to Scoobson University, yeah, he's engineering, I'm architecture, um.
Good job.
Been been there for, thank you very much, I appreciate that. And so, uh, we had an opportunity to, to work as a, as a state representative, working with Michelle Obama, I did this walk from Shreveport to Baton Rouge to bring aware, awareness to autism and childhood obesity, and so we're able to get a lot of laws changed and with that, and so I've worked with a lot of, uh, which are representative, Miss Thompson here, and with, uh, Katrina Jackson, and all those people who know them very, very well, so just wanted to make up.
I got one more question, so do, so do the private companies, people wanting you to be part of the application?
No. They won't give the money at all to a private company that, but it, it's for the cities and the towns and the entities that owe that to their citizens.
Yeah, when it, when the money comes, it's coming straight to Bastrop, so you're gonna be in control of what, what happened.
So, basically, the, the inevitable coming.
Yes.
We get the forty-nine, given, uh, the council's pleasure on this issue, we get the forty-nine percent, that really less of a burden what's coming down the pipe on us privately owned company, because everybody's just scrambling.
So, so do you need to add a private company to the resolution?
Thank you.
They, they can't be part of the resolution.
So now I wanna make that motion. Okay. I would like to make a motion that we need to accept the application, that EJES.
Yes.
Do we have a motion on the floor? And a second, are there any questions, Mr. Green, that you had a whole question? Well, while we're in that mood, um, in that study, when you all conduct those surveys and identify.
Yes.
At the population. Yes, sir, let me finish, let me, let me finish. Those people will be identified who decline, that don't want any work done, so when it comes down to, let's say, class action suit or file, they have already been identified.
Yes.
And if the owners is no longer on the city, we want you to make that. Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, motion carries?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Castle and Green, you remind me a lot of myself when I was only, I have to ask those questions, sir, I appreciate you.
Just lock your other words. I need to talk to your other words.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, and, and let's stay attached, thank you, Mr. Nelson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, that brings us to resolution twenty-three.
It's actually twenty thirty-two, ma'am.
Yeah, thirty-three on the. Provided for council and returns, declaring the results of the special election in the city of Bastrop, table Louisiana on Saturday, Z seventeen, we've already talked about that, and I spoke return of bill votes about it, election hasn't occurred, so wish your pleasure on this resolution. To go back to ourselves, tax, um.
The county tax per, if they send a, the election and it all passed, all for, it was street sewer, I remember the other in there, but they, they were all together.
Now, I'm in for the twenty, twenty thirty-three, is that right?
Two, two, let me make that correction. Okay, Mr. Locke has made motion?
It's twenty-three, twenty thirty-two?
Yes, sir. Let me make that correction. Mr. Locke made a motion, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
And second by Mr. Shaw, any question, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Okay, item D, April Hill, M L T sound, she's not here, okay? That takes care of every item, doesn't it, Mr. Doe? At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Old time sound.
Who's gonna make a motion?
All right, I make my question, I put it in one.
And second, probably a little good second, if you would join us in the squad room, you can just.